Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town Hall for the Energy Efficient Lighting Standards. This is the second phase of the energy project, and in this phase, we're looking to make sure that we not only hand out efficient light bulbs, but also put the rules and necessary things in place to make the change easier. So today, we have with us a consultant, Ms. Dr. Erwin Edwards. And Dr. Erwin Edwards has worked in energy for the past 20 years and ICT for over 35 years. He possesses a Bachelor's of Science degree in natural sciences, with a double major in computer science and physics from the University of the West Indies. He went on to complete a master's in philosophy from the Department of Physics in the special area of alternate energy and a PhD in the Department of Economics and Energy Efficiency. Erwin was also trained in negotiation at the Ivy School of Business, University of Southern Ontario, in ISO standards on carbon reduction in the UK. Dr. Edwards has completed energy consultancies of major companies and institutions in Barbados and around the region, in the area of ICT, energy and environment, including IDB, UNDP, UNIDO, World Bank, CARICOM, OICS, Five Seas, and the UN Economic Commissions of Latin America and Caribbean Governments. He is the winner of Barbados Coalition Service Industries' Service Exporter of the Year Award for 2009, and one of the first graduates of the BCSI CSECEP Export Readiness Program. Dr. Edwards has written for local publications and has published with Elsevier, for which he has been volunteer reviewer for 12 years. He chaired the National Electro-Technical Committee under the BNSI and a regional project team for labelling standards for Crosscuil. Dr. Edwards is also a founding member of the Barbados Energy Management and Renewable Energy Technology Programs at the UE Cave Hill and St. Augustine campuses. He has worked with the German-funded International Network for Energy and Environmental Sustainability, a network of universities from Germany, Ghana, Bangladesh, Colombia, and the Caribbean. The network focused on building capacity and facilitating the exchange of lectures and students with network participating universities, renewable energy and ICT, IDB capacity building projects in Barbados, Jamaica, and Trinidad and Tobago. He is currently the CEO of Atom Solutions in Barbados, and he's here to help us and give your presentation on energy standards that can be implemented in Monserrat and get your feedback on how this can affect you. This is your chance to have a say in how laws and different policies can affect you for now and in the future. I'd like to welcome Mr. Erwin Edwards to the stage.
Thank you very much for the welcome. So you've heard a lot of... Okay, very good. All right, thanks again. Thank you all for coming. So I am the CEO of Atom Solutions in Barbados. I've been to Monserrat a number of times. I worked on the geothermal projects back in between 2012 and 2015. I actually had one of these Town Hall meetings in the cultural centre. I don't know if any of you were there. We were talking about how we can get value out of the volcano that has been around for a long time. Anyway, today, we're here to talk about standards. So I will do my best to get you to understand what the standard is, what it will mean to you if you need to do anything, or if you need to do nothing. But at least, the main objective today is to educate you, so that you have a good understanding of what it is. So I will do a short presentation, and at the end, hopefully, you will have questions. But if you happen to have a burning question that you can't hold, just raise your hand, and I will pause and allow you to ask your question. And I will do my best to answer as many as I can. All right, can you see the screen okay? I know right now the sun has a little corner, but that's going to move pretty soon. Okay, so we want to cover six main areas. I'll give you a little bit of background to the labelling standard. I'll explain the methodology, basically, how I went about developing the standard for Monserrat. We're going to talk about the key characteristics of the standard and why the standard is important. Then we will get to what the standard actually is, and then how we will implement the standard. All right, so we'll start with the background. Background really will be two pretty pictures. This little pie chart here is really a reflection of, regionally, where we get our lighting from. Our light bulbs, if you look at the box, you'll always see "Made in China", or "Made in Mexico", or whatever. So this little chart shows you, basically, where most of our appliances, light appliances, come from. So you see China, 70%. So 70% of the bulbs, not just in Monserrat, across the region, come from China. The next biggest one is the USA, which is 11%, and all the others are single digits. So by and large, you can say that most of our stuff comes from China. Which is true not just for lighting. I'm sure it's true for many other things, your phones, your iPods, and various things. So just to give you a background, so you understand where your equipment is coming from and why we need the standard. The next diagram shows a demographic of the types of lights that we have in the region. So you will see that we have a decent percentage of LEDs, which is the orange section, and that is about 40%. So we've got about 40% of our lighting in the region is LEDs. And that's not bad. The next group is CFLs, which is the compact fluorescent lamps, which are the ones, kind of the curly ones, those are CFLs. We've got 39, which is just about the same. So we've got about the same quantity of LEDs and CFLs across the region. But then there are the old incandescent ones, the ones that we all grew up with, these reddish-yellowish kind of light incandescents, which are one of the more inefficient lights that you can have, but it's also one of the cheaper ones. That's probably why we still have about 15% around. Because if you have $2 and you need to buy a light, and one light costs a dollar, the other one costs $2, you'll buy the one for the dollar and keep the dollar to buy something else. And that's a practical approach, right? So we still have these incandescent lamps around. And then there are halogens and some various other specialty bulbs that we also have. But by and large, in the home environment, you will find CFLs and the LEDs and just a few incandescents. So this is what we're looking to change. Now, how did we create the standard? The first thing that I would have done is a lighting standard review. That is, look at the standards that are around. We're not, Monserrat is not the first country to look to implement a standard. So it would make sense for us to kind of look around, see what people have done. And it was recommended that we look at the CARICOM standard. CARICOM has a lighting standard, right? So that standard would have been reviewed in an aim, really, to save ourselves time. There's no point in redoing something that has already been done. So we looked at the CARICOM standard, and we picked out the best of that standard for Monserrat. We didn't just say, "Well, just implement it." That standard was developed in 2018, that, six years ago. And in the last six years, a lot would have changed in technology. CARICOM standard looks at both LEDs and CFLs. It accepts both of them, right? So it would make sense for us to go to the front of the class. Now, the front of the class was always the place we were supposed to be, even though it was always in the back, but never mind that. So instead of you trying to catch up with the other 14 CARICOM members, this is an opportunity for you to go right to the front, for you to implement a lighting standard that is better than the region. So instead of looking at a standard that dealt with LEDs and CFLs, we said, "Well, we will eliminate the CFLs altogether", because the LEDs are still twice as inefficient as those. So the recommendation is that we take the best of the CARICOM standard, or we eliminate the CFLs from it, and in some cases, we raise the standard a little bit more. That will make sure that your homes are some of the more efficient homes as it relates to lighting over time. Because the standard doesn't, because the standard may be implemented tomorrow, it doesn't mean that automatically everybody's house becomes efficient. Over time, as you change out your bulbs, I don't think it's the aim of the ministry to come into your homes and take away your old bulbs. But they don't last forever. Every now and then, you need to change them. So when you need to change and you go shopping, you want to buy an efficient light bulb. So we want you as a customer to make that choice, but we're going to help you. If I gave you a choice between A and B, then you will look at the cost, you'll look at this thing and that thing, then you will pick. But if you walk into the store and it only had an A and an A+, that's a better choice. Because once you choose one of those, you know that you go straight to the front of the class. So we reviewed the CARICOM standard, and we picked the best of it, and that is what we're going to use in the Monserrat standard. We also had a public sector consultation. I would have met with various departments in government to get an understanding of what they're trying to do, be familiar with the lighting program that you're already into, et cetera. So we would have had their input so far. And that was important, just like it's important to get your input today. What we have right now is a draft standard. It is not final, it's not done. It can't be done until we've had a conversation. So your input is important in completing that. So we've completed the public sector consultation with government. We've also done some private sector consultation. I would have met yesterday with at least four different retailers and supermarket owners who you would probably buy your bulbs from, is that correct? Yeah? Right, so we met with them to hear from them what their concerns are, what their experiences are in the lighting space and dealing with clients, et cetera. They've made some good suggestions that we will try to take on board. For example, one company said, "But the LEDs will cost more." So, "And we need to get a break", meaning if an old bulb that's inefficient may cost $0.50, and the LED costs $0.60, that's $0.10 more at the end of the day. So the thing is, what can be done? In many CARICOM countries, what they've done is to remove the duties and the tax from the LED bulb. So now it comes in at a cheaper price than it would normally. So hopefully, the difference in price between the old bulbs and the new bulbs won't be significant. So it should not be, you know, have an adverse effect on your choice when you go to shop. So that's some of the feedback that I've been getting from your retailers. So in a sense, they are looking out for your interests. Okay, so in looking at the CARICOM standard, we've selected key things we want to focus on, and I will go through some of them in detail. If you're not every single one, I'm sure you're not interested in every single technical detail. But we're going to go through some of the key considerations with you so that you can understand why they're being used. We're going to talk about testing services, because whenever you have a standard, there must be a test. I'm not sure how your school system works, but it used to work in Barbados, because we have a similar English background. You go into primary school, and then when you're about 10, 11, you do a test, yeah? And in our case, it will determine which school you go to. And there were schools that we thought were top-class schools. There are some that we thought were middle-range, and there are some that nobody really wanted their children to go to. You got that in Monserrat, or you don't have that kind of choice. You don't. But the point is that there was a test to determine what the next step would be, right? So if we have LED bulbs or any other bulbs coming into the country, we need to test them. So we will know which ones are the good ones, which ones are the okay ones, and which ones are the bad ones. And we want to make sure that only the bulbs that are good ones make it to the store. So when you go to buy a bulb, you don't have to weed out which one is good, which one is bad. Every bulb you see on your shelf should be one that meets the standard and is acceptable, right? So there must be a test. And that test thing is done for the CARICOM region in Trinidad. So if there's a bulb that we need to launch on in the Monserrat space, we have it go to Trinidad, we have it tested, and we get the results. And the results need to meet our standard or be better. Better is always good, but at least it needs to meet the standard. So testing is going to be very important. And what we call customer documentation, really, which is really a label. I'll show you a sample at the end. It's a little sticker that tells you all you need to know about the bulb. It'll tell you about the brightness of it, it'll tell you how long it's supposed to last, it will tell you some other technical things that you may or may not be interested in, it'll tell you how efficient the bulb is, et cetera. So there'll be a little sticker that should be right there next to that bulb when you go to purchase. So if you have bulb A, and bulb B, and bulb C, all three got a sticker. You can look, and you can compare. This one is 99% efficient, this one is 97, this one is 96, yeah? So you can consider not just the price, consider the price and consider the specifications for that particular bulb. And that sticker will be, hopefully, very layman-friendly, meaning that you don't have to be an engineer to figure it out. It should be very simple for you to understand and help you to make that choice. So that was the methodology look that we looked at. Now, in terms of those key characteristics, the things that we will test for, we're going to test startup time, and I will come back and explain each of these. I'll just go through the list first. So we're going to be testing the startup time. We're testing what we call the run-up time, switching cycles, premature failure rates. Some of these descriptions cannot what they, what it really means, but don't worry, I'll explain all of them. Flicker, the rated life of the lamp. Of course, that means how long the lamp is supposed to last. The efficacy or efficiency, safety, colour rendering index, power factor, harmonic distortion, and lumine maintenance. These are all some technical things that the lighting experts in the laboratory in Trinidad will test. And we will give them a standard for each one of those. So if the start time is to be 0.1 second, they will test the lamp for that. And if the lamp starts up in 0.2 seconds, it fails, right? That way, the bulbs that don't start fast enough are kept out of Monserrat, right? And the bulbs where the rated life is not long enough are kept out of Monserrat, because you will have results to show that, all right? So these are the key characteristics that we're going to look at, some of them in some more detail. Now, why is the standard important? Today, Monserrat has no fixed criteria for accepting lamps into the country, meaning whatever lamp turns up at the port in a container comes in, nobody can say "that one" or "not that one". There's nothing that they can use to say that this one is good and this one is not. There's nothing. So anything that comes to the port ends up in your home, all right? That's not necessarily a good thing. So that's one reason why we need the standard. The next reason is that also the importers have no way to verify what the manufacturers claim. The manufacturers may print on the box, "It will last for eternity", they don't know if that's true or not. Of course, we know nothing lasts for eternity. They may say it will, you know, burn at a particular intensity for whatever years and stuff. They always make claims, right? But somebody has to check those claims, right? We can't continue to accept products that come from, and where do most of them come from? China. We can't always take their word for it. Even if they did test, and I'm sure they do, they may be testing in their environment. Monserrat is not China. Monserrat is a small island in the Caribbean, in the tropics. That is the environment that our stuff needs to be tested in. Not in Europe, where the climate is completely different, right? So the reality is that we can't continue to accept what manufacturers claim, because we can end up with inferior products. I don't know if you see it here, but sometimes we even see medication that says "Not for use in the USA", or "For export purposes only", in other words, not for our people to use, but we can export it for somebody else to use. I still see that in medication, right? Not acceptable. So we want to make sure that our importers, who put things on the shelves for us, that they have a way of testing to verify the supplier's claim. Right? So basically, then you are at the mercy of your suppliers, because you could only buy what's on the shelf. It's like you want granulated sugar, and the only thing there is cane sugar and beet sugar. You can't get the sugar that you want to bake, that special bread that you want to bake, right? So you're basically at the mercy of the manufacturers. You don't really have a choice beyond what's, you know, on the shelf. Whatever they provide, you've got to pick from that. So we want to improve your decision-making capacity, and that's why standards are important. Some other important things to note. Implementing this standard will support the national policies, the things that government are trying to do in terms of making Monserrat a more efficient country. So you're supporting that when you do this, it also reduces consumption. Because when you have a bulb that is 90% more efficient, it means that you're using way less electricity for your lighting. And you will see how that works out in the long run, meaning when everybody gets on board, everybody's consumption will come down, you will save some money, and your utility will have to deliver less electricity to the country. And that should, hopefully, hopefully, reduce the number of lightouts, lightsoaps, blackouts, whatever you call them, that you may be experiencing. So those are two important... You're also supporting the CARICOM policy. CARICOM does play a central role in the region. They try to set policies that help all the countries that, you know, constitute CARICOM. So it's in support of the programs that they've been rolling out. It certainly supports your energy department's framework, the lighting program. So by having standards, it gives support to those other things. All right, it will reduce the appliance operating costs. Your lights will use less electricity. Ultimately, you may need to import less oil. You are still like most of the Caribbean countries where you are highly dependent on oil. So if oil prices go high, you have to pay it. If they go low, you're happy. Does your electricity bill vary with the price of oil? It does, okay. So you are completely exposed. You have no control over the cost of your electricity, none. You cannot approach any oil supplier and say, "Let's strike a deal." There is no deal. You either pay what they ask, or you walk away. And it won't make a difference to them, because what you need is a very small amount. If you were buying huge amounts of oil, you could sit down and say, "Let's make a deal", you can negotiate. But you can't negotiate when you only want a small amount of something, right? So this could reduce our dependence on this fuel, which we are struggling to pay, all of us in the region. Only one country produces net amount of oil, and that is Trinidad and Tobago. So by having the standard, once we test a light, we will then determine if it passes or if it fails. If the lamp fails the test, it's not allowed in. If it passed the test, then it's allowed into the country. And we will know which ones pass the test, because when they're tested, as long as it's passed, they will be able to have, get that label, that sticker to put next to the bulb in the store. So if the bulb fails, it can't go on the shelf, they don't get that little sticker with the results for them to post, for people to use, all right? So testing is very important, and having the standard equally as important. Now, we're going to talk about the standard itself, the details of the things that we're going to be testing for, right? So the first one is efficacy. And what that is, is a measure of how much light a light source produces for the energy that's put into it. And it's usually expressed by watts per lumens per watt. So you're probably familiar with things like a 100-watt bulb, or a 60-watt bulb, or a 40-watt bulb. But those things cost, the price is different, and they look different, meaning the brightness is different. So when you're examining a bulb, the question is, "How much light do you get per kilowatt?" That is a way of standardizing the evaluation of that bulb. So it's something that they will do in the lab. They'll turn that bulb on, they'll measure the brightness, and determine how much brightness are they getting for each kilo, for each watt that that bulb is using, right? That's the first measure that they use. And for our standard, we are saying we have to get at least 75 lumens per watt. So immediately, this is something you want to look for when you buy your LED. You want to look at the box, something, and see what it says. And what the standard will make sure that every bulb that you see on your shelf, that number will be 75 or higher. You're not going to see a 60-lumens-per-watt bulb on your shelf. That means that that bulb is inefficient. It's not giving enough light for the money that you are spending for it to turn on, right? So that's what this means. So it's called efficacy, or you could say efficiency, how much light do I get per watt. So it has to be at least 75. The next thing we look at is safety. You always need to look at safety. Whenever there's a new technology, there are probably new risks and new considerations that need to be looked at. Now, LEDs emit their light in a particular radiation band, 450 to 650 nanometers. Now, nanometers is not something that you can, you can't visualize it. It is 1 meter divided by 100 million. 1 meter. 1,000 million, that is how much a nanometer is, right? 10 to the minus 9. So it's not a measurement that you can, you can't conceptualize it. But in this environment, the testing environment, they will have equipment that will be able to look to see what is the wavelength of the light coming from this bulb, right? Normally, the light you're exporting here now is white light. But you may remember from school, if you put white light through a prism, the prism splits the white light into different colours. Where do we see those colours? The rainbow. When a rainbow falls, you see the rainbow. The rainbow results from this, what we call white light, coming through the moisture in the air, and white light gets split into all the colours of the rainbow. And each colour represents a different wavelength, right? Again, that's something that your eyes will pick up. But the light travelling, the wavelength determines the colour. So you might have blue looking like this, and you have red looking like this. It's not something that you could easily visualize, right? But in the lab, they will take the light from the bulb, right? And they will see, basically, what the wavelength is, and it's between 450 and 460. And at some point, there were concerns about the impact on the retina in your eyes, right? Because this is in the colour-blue range, right? When we look at the sky, you see blue, because there's a lot of scattered radiation. So there was concern about the safety of the LED, but they've done a lot of research, yeah, on it, and the conclusion is that LEDs are safe for your eyes, right? They are safe, you don't need to worry about it, right? So there is another standard, standard done by, it says here, the IEC 62560. These are standards done by an International Electro-Technical Committee. This is the international experts, technical experts, and there are a number of safety things that they look at. So they have a list. So in the lab in Trinidad, we will get them to test the internalists to make sure that each LED that they test can meet the safety standard. There are also concerns like, you know, starting a fire, you know? We have EVs, I don't know if you have any here. The EVs on the road and in some places of the world, The EVs on the road and in some places of the world, the battery's been catching a fire and all types of weird things happening. Those things need to have been tested properly to make sure that that doesn't happen. So if these lights, they will be tested to make sure that they won't just catch a fire while you're asleep. Or if you leave a lamp on and you come back, your house is on fire. So there are many safety things that will be tested before that bulb is given a pass into Monseerat. So we looked at efficiency and we looked at safety. Two very important things. The next one is what we call color rendering. That is, how well does the bulb reveal the true color? Remember, you see objects because of the light that's falling on them. If you were to close this room up, there was no light coming in, you will see what? Darkness, nothing. And for you to see something, you have to put a spotlight on it. So when you put the spotlight on it, you see a color. Right? But the color that you see is impacted by the light that you put on it. If I put my iPhone light on it, it looks a certain kind of cream. If I put a normal search light on it, it looks different. Right? So depending on the light that you put in an object, it may look different. What we want in a lamp is that when you spot it on something, it shows you the real color. And the real color is how it looks in white light or natural light. So this is natural light we're in here now. So we know the real color here is cream. So if we go to 2:00 AM in the morning, sun is gone and we put an LED light on it, will it look exactly like this? That's what color rendering tests. How accurately does it represent the color? Or you may say, but you don't really care about that. You go in your bathroom, you turn on your light as long as you can see your face basin and your toilet and your shower and stuff. You do what you gotta do, you come out, right? You're not in there to inspect whether the towels still look the same color as when you bought them. That's not important to you. So this is important to some people, however. For example, if you were doing art restoration, there are people who would take a piece of art that has kind of, they look pretty badly and they try to restore it, make it look as it did before. No, they need to work with light as it's real. Right? You don't want to take a painting that's worth $20 million and restore it. And then when you look at it in a particular light, it doesn't look like it did before because the colors are different. You can't make that mistake. So those guys have to work with bulbs that have a color rendering index close to 100%. Keep it absolutely accurate. So in our standard, we are saying for, for your homes, right? Unless you're doing that type of work at home or you're working in a neonatal unit where they need light of a specific rendering, right? Unless you're in that scenario, over 80 is good. So we're saying it may not show you perfect color, which is 100%, but it has to be over 80. So if that lamp, when you shine it on something, the distortion of the light is below 80, it fails. Right? So you don't want to buy orange curtains and you put in the LED light and they look purplish. Right? Distortion the light, you don't want that. You want your colors to look like they're supposed to look, even if it's not perfect. So as exams go, over 80% is not bad. All right? So that's what they will test for. Those are three things that we're going to test for already that are important. More important to some than others. The other thing is what we call the power factor, which is the ratio of the active power to the apparent power. Gets a little technical. What we're seeing is that a certain amount of power goes into the lamp. Right? And based on what the lamp is shining, it demonstrates a different level of power. Right? So how well it converts the power into a power that gives you light, that's your power factor. Right? So you would want it to be one, perfect. That way you're not wasting anything. But we don't get that. Many LEDs will give you about 95%. And you can get 99% if you're running it in a DC current environment. Most of our homes run AC, correct? You normally run AC in your homes. So you won't get 99%, but you should get close. So when you look again at your packaging, you're looking for what's the power factor? So if you see a power factor of 60, you know that's not good. That means that that light is wasting a lot of power. So for the standard, it's a little bit more complicated. That is the saying, if the bulb is a 2 watt bulb. Right? I don't know, well, you, you will see 2 watt bulbs. If it's less than 2, 2 watts, we're not concerned about it because it's already a small consumer. It ain't doing nothing much. So whether it does it well or not, don't matter. Right? If it's between 2 watts and 5 watts, which is heading out to what we would have used to call like a 40 watt bulb, incandescent bulb. You get into that range now. So we need it to meet some standard. So we're saying it needs to be a power factor of at least 0.4. Almost halfway. And when you go above that, 5 watts to 25 watt, power factor needs to be at least 0.7, 70%. Now if you look at these lights, right? What do you think about the color rendering? Does the color look true? Look a little yellow, right? Okay, that tells you something about those lamps. And if it's above 20, 25 watts, which is now above what you would call a 100 watt bulb, usually the brightest that you'll put into your house, we're saying now it needs to be at least 0.9, 90%. At that power, you cannot afford to be wasting your energy. Right? So the lab will, will test the bulb depending on the wattage of the bulb, whether it's a 2 watt or 5 watt, 25 watt or whatever. They will test it to make sure that it meets that standard, 0.4, 0.7 or 0.9. Right? And if you have a 30 watt bulb that's only giving you 0.85, what happens to that? I need the answer so that I know that you're listening to me. If you have a 30 watt bulb, which means it's over 25, right? What power factor do you expect? Look at the screen, don't ask me what? If it's 30 watts, what power factor is a pass? You see 0.55 on the screen? 0.7 is a pass if the bulb is between 5 watts and 25 watts. If it is over 25 watts, it needs to be 0.9. So if the lab tests and says it's only 0.85, it fails. You might say, but, but this is a 0.7. But the 0.7 applies to lamps between 5 watts and 25. So once you hit 26 watts, you've got to be at least 90%. Because at that power, right? That, that's when you pay maximum for your lighting on that bulb, you cannot afford it to be wasted. You need it to be efficient. So it has to be at least 0.9. Right? I know you're stressing some, you guys technically, but you're keeping up, right? Keeping up. So this is a little bit more, more complicated than the others because this depends on the exact power of the bulb that you're testing. Right? So again, if you fail this, if you fail any of these tests, the bulb fails and it will not be allowed in Monseerat. This way, when you look around your home, you will always see lamps that are efficient and that have passed the standard. All right? So what else do we check for? Lumin maintenance. Remember, lumen is the brightness, right? So we're talking now about maintaining the brightness of the lamp, looking at the performance of your bulb day after day and year after year as you go along, 2024, 25, 26, 27. Same bulb, to what extent does it keep burning the way it's supposed to? And the reality is that they all, they all will degrade a bit. Even, I had a look, was it yesterday? We looked at the PV system or yesterday? Today we looked at the PV system you have out on, is that way? Look out, right? Even with the PV system, when they first put it in, it delivered a certain amount of power. But every year, it delivers a little less and a little less and a little less. So the, the theory is after 12 years, they're going to be performing so poorly, we need to replace them. Right? So generally PVs are said to have a life of 20 years. You can run it past 20 years, but the output is going to keep dropping, heading towards zero. So LEDs are like that. LEDs will start off at a new brand, like a new car, working perfectly. Over time, it will decrease exponentially. Slowly, slowly, hour by hour, it will keep coming down. But incandescents, right? After about 1,500 hours, they will simply stop. With the incandescent, you turn off your light, you go to sleep. And the next day you turn on, it don't come on. It's sudden death. Right? LEDs don't give you a sudden death. They give you a gradual death over many hours, however. Right? Not 1,500. So at 1,500 hours, the old bulbs go dead. At 1,500 hours, LEDs will simply be curving, curving and curving. Sorry? The good ones. Well, the thing is, we're going to test for this. So we're going to find out, how good is it? How well is it, does it maintain its brightness? So if it doesn't maintain its brightness for the hours that we want, fail. Not loaded Monseerat. So the LEDs that you get should stay nice and bright longer. Is there a question over here? Okay. So to your first question, are we behind? Are we 10 years behind? Yes, we are. The first step in the process here was to review a Caricom standard that was published in 2018. I worked with that standard and it took about three years. So then subtract three from 18. 2015, that we were getting the data that was saying what we need to do. Now we're in 2024 now, right? So we are almost 10 years down the road, which is why I'm not recommending Caricom's 2018 standard. Instead, I'm taking the best of the Caricom standard because some good things don't get better. Right? And I've improved some areas of the standard to make sure that you go to the front of the line as opposed to trying to catch up from 10 years behind. So the standard itself puts Monseerat at the front of the line. That's the first answer to you. But your substantive point was that we've already been invaded by all kinds of stuff. Right? That are in people's homes and you're asking, how do we deal with that, right? Okay. Now the first thing that we did is a lighting program that says, bring your old lamps with your electric bill. Bring them in and we'll exchange them for some good LEDs. So that's the first thing you need to do. They still got lamps. So if you haven't taken yours? Good question, good question. Now we only know during the standard. So while we didn't have a standard, while we didn't have a standard when we purchased that, I am sure that the department would have, on their own volition, checked to make sure that the lights that were being distributed, since it was being done through, I think, Rezimbid, which is a European... Hold on, let me just at least finish, right? They, they kind of came through the Rezimbid, which is a, a European fund. Who would have applied the European standard to it? It may not be identical to ours, but it won't be 10 years lagging. I can, I can tell you that. The Europeans are not lagging. They're the ones who are at the front of the line. So the lamps that would have been purchased for the lamp exchange program are most likely compliant with the standard. Most likely. But until we test them, I wouldn't, you know, swear. Hold, just one second. Bees are fluorescent? But you have to say what you mean. LEDs. LEDs. Oh, sorry, yeah. Sorry? Which one? Well, you don't need to be lost. We're, we're developing a standard. But e- even with a standard, right? Even have it, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, don't hold on. How, how, how would you recommend? This is the working?
What would you recommend? A standard be used, help the example you just gave. Or would you recommend? Or would you recommend using the standard to help them?
Okay. Fair enough. But wait, 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 wait. You pause and as soon as I... You pause and as soon as I start to speak, you start again. Thank you so much. Now, buying a light for your home, whose responsibility is that? Okay, good. It is your responsibility. If you have a child, who needs to read at night? It is your responsibility to buy a light that is appropriate. When you go in a store, you will see the 2-watt lamps, the 5-watt lamps, the 8-watt lamps, the 20-watt lamps, the 25-watt lamps. And they even tell you, right? This LED 25-watt lamp is equivalent to a 100-watt incandescent, which people are accustomed to. It's a way to help you to kind of figure out. Now the brightest light I ever had in my house was 100, was a 100-watt. The brightest light I ever had. I had no problem reading, none. So if you, if in a particular room, right? If you know this is the room in which my child will study and read, buy a light that gives you adequate lumens for your child. If however, you don't know, and you go and you buy a 10-watt LED and you put it in and it's not bright enough, what do you do? You go back to the store. You either exchange it or you buy a 25-watt bulb and you put it in and your child is happy. You have an extra, you can put that one in your bathroom. My point is that it's your responsibility to buy the appropriate light. Whether the issue is brightness, which is what you're raising, or if it's color rendering, you know you're working with art and you go and you buy a lamp that says the color rendering is 85. And when the art specialist look at it, they say, that looks funny. That's your responsibility. So what we will do, what the government can do, is to try to make sure that the retailers and the supermarkets have their lights tested and post that little label that will tell you, this gives you this amount of light. This gives you a color rendering of this amount. And if you're an engineer and you're really concerned about power and this has a power factor of point whatever, the information will be there. And yes, there will need to be a, an education campaign to make sure that, you know, the housewife, the gardener can go into a store, you gotta be able to read. Once you can read, you should be able to figure out, you see this one here? This is going to be too dim for me. This might work in my bathroom, but not for my night light, for me to read my Bible before I go to sleep. So I can get that one. And we, we may do trial and error. But is it a case of buying a truck and then you realize it's too small, you need a longer trailer? No, it's a lamp. So we all want to learn. Just like we learned to use the incandescents, we know where to put a 25-watt, where to put a 40-watt. My parents knew. And none of them went to secondary school. They figure out which room need what kind of lamp. This is what, they try to help you with the labeling. But if they fall short, you'll figure it out. Three years from now, this conversation won't be happening. Because you would have gone through the curve. You would have learnt what kind of light you need to buy for what. The photographers would not make the mistake in going buying lights with color rendering a point six to try to take your, your passport photo that the US Embassy reject because they say the quality too poor. They won't make that mistake, right? So it's going to be a learning curve. But by having a standard, because if you don't have a standard, everything goes, right? Everything goes and it will hurt you. Because if, if you make a product based on light and you take it to an international institution and they reject it, who are you going to blame? US Embassy don't care anything about the fact that you upload a photo that don't meet the spec. They just tell, they just tell you it doesn't, oh, stop. Done, case closed. It's your responsibility to go and make sure that your photographer can give you a picture with proper color rendering. So we have to take some responsibility. We will comment to you. We will try to provide as much information as we can on that little label. So when you go shopping, you can make a proper choice and not just based on cost, right? The one that barely make the standard might be the cheapest one. It's good enough. But if you know you need something better than good enough, you buy the one that costs an extra 10 cents, right? There's a question over here?
Thank you. My question is, um, I have more than one. But I, I could ask. So what about the fixtures? Um, the gentleman spoke about persons already bought fixtures. My, I bought LED light. I don't know if they're at what any standard there, but they're built in fixtures. They're not bulbs that you can just take off and replace. So my question is, in bringing this standard in place, how do you actually test at the port of entry when somebody orders their fixtures from overseas to see whether or not they're meeting that standard? Is there something different in terms of the built-in type LED fixtures vis a vis those that you put bulbs in the shades? Because some of my lights, they don't have a bulb that I take out.
Well, that, that will be a challenge, no doubt. But to address the general question first, how, how will you know? For any, for any lamp or fixture that we need to know about, we will send it to be tested, right? The, the specialists will figure that out. Meaning, you may have two or three LED assemblies in your, your fixture. And that's a challenge for me and you. But the guys in the lab, they will know how to deal with that. So, so that if there's not a case of one lamp in their hand, you've kind of got four of them fitted together, they'll be able to test that accordingly, right? And get the result from it. Not here, it will be done in Trinidad. I will show you a couple of slides of, uh, some of the equipment that is in Trinidad. The, the region is so small, we can't afford for every island to invest all the equipment that they need to do testing. But lights is just one thing. There's testing being done for air conditioners, which consume 100 times more than lights. So we started with baby steps, right? AC is something we need to look at. Now in your case, I take it that most of your homes are not air conditioned. In Barbados, most of ours are not. But in Cayman Islands, where he did some work, in Cayman Islands, every house has either a central AC, meaning there's a big AC in the back and it has all the outlets all through the house. Or they got about three split systems. Every single home. Now it's a cultural thing, so don't let it get to your head, right? It's a cultural thing. Yeah, because I know if they didn't have all those ACs and they open the windows, they won't die. But I'm not going to try to convince. Yes, so I'm not going to try to persuade, that is their lifestyle. No, no, it's not the major saver, but you can't say it don't, don't save you anything. It depends on how you consume, right? For some people, lighting may be half their bill because you're not running an AC. And if you're running an AC, that's going to be 60% of your costs, right there. Then you got your refrigerator and some people got a freezer. And some people have got big tools and different things that will consume. So it depends on your profile, which is why you do audits. But I personally don't push audits for residentials because a home is a home is a home. They come in different sizes, but a home is a home. Unless your home is special. So if you got a home in Monsterat and you got seven bedrooms and five ACs, then you're special and you should get an audit. But for the average person, you got two or three bedrooms, you got no AC, you got a light in every room, you got a stove, might be gas or electricity, have a refrigerator, basic stuff, you may have a mixer, you got a toaster, basic stuff. I don't need to audit you. Tell me what your bill is and I can tell you some things you need to go do and you'll see some savings. So if the lighting is small on your list, then you don't save a ton of money. You might save $5 a month, yeah? But we're going to come to bigger things. So testing is important. And so different islands have invested in testing equipment. Trinidad invested in lighting. Jamaica, they have a lab to test refrigerators and air conditioners. And we will have other labs around the region to support each other. Because we don't all need to do, to test everything ourselves. If we test a bulb for Monsterat, model RT100, and St. Vincent decides to try that bulb, they don't have to test. The lab will say, oh, we did that already for Monsterat. Here are the results, you're good. In one conversation, you're good. But if it's a new item, nobody has used, it needs to be tested before you import 10,000 of them into the country.
Yes, my last follow-up question. So we're looking at the policy, which would, it would be a policy that comes in in terms of what lights we can bring into Monsterat. That's what I'm seeing coming from the standards. How is the practicality of testing from the suppliers to have? You show a graph where about 70% of the lights come from imports to Chi- from China. How do we get the suppliers to buy a certain type of bulb? Then LED, and you're talking about testing and getting it to go to Trinidad to test. Are we taking that route? Or do we use the example that you just did? That there are some lights that are already tested that come from China that could be recommended for Monsterat in terms of that standard at the higher level? I'm just looking at the practicality of it.
I got you, the, the three, the three scenarios. One, it's a, it's a new bulb. Hasn't been used in the region before, right? It has to go and get tested, yeah? There's, there's no option. It has to be tested and the results come back. When the results come back, it's available to the region. So the other 14 CARICOM countries don't need to do that anymore. It's done. The other scenario, when you see the bulb, you check with the lab, it has already been tested. So you don't need to test it, so you're good to go. The other scenario is where we recognize our own lack of capacity. Even though we have Trinidad, I mean, a bulb takes a long time to test. How am I going to know that a bulb really keeps its light for five years? They don't need to run the test for five years. They have a way to accelerate that. The point is it will take time and they can only do so much. So what CARICOM has done with its labs is to have them establish relationships with other labs that we can trust. You can decide if you trust a Chinese lab or not, but we have, as I said, you can decide. But we may, we have labs, well, there are labs in Latin America that Cross-Q, which is responsible for standards and quality in the region, that they work with, that also do testing. So true relationship with them, the stuff that they have tested, we can access their results because there's a relationship and we can trust them. We don't trust every lab around the globe. But we pick those who we have relationships with so we can share the information. So there are three different scenarios that could play out. Worst case scenario is that your, your product is so new, nobody in the region has it, have tested it and all partners haven't tested it either. We have to get it tested. I mean, who wants to go and do a robot doing internal surgery that hasn't been tested? Who want to be first? Nobody wants to be first. You want to get your test done first. You want some results that says, okay, it did three surgeries in Jamaica, all the patients lived. That will give you confidence. You don't want to be x-rayed by a machine that, that you don't know anything about. Because x-rays can mess you up. It can fry you, right? So all these, all this, this is all pieces of equipment that need to be tested. So we, we shouldn't let testing become a stumbling block. It's necessary. You don't vaccine all your children with a vaccine that somebody just run away and say, got it? No, you want the vaccine to be tested, right? And you're sure that it will do what it's supposed to do and not do what it's not supposed to do. So testing is nothing new. Some things take 10 years to test. Lights won't take 10 years. We're probably talking weeks for the lighting, yeah? But we shouldn't make testing a, a big problem. First in that.
How does Monsterat adopting, how does Monsterat adopting this standard, this standard, help what the consumer really wants to look at? Is generation charge, actually, that's called the fuel surcharge? So how does testing with bulbs, with generation, um, putting a standard, different equipment that we use in the household, how does that affect the fuel surcharge, um, that the consumer has?
It doesn't affect, it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect the, the rate. What it can affect is the volume. Meaning, if you're using 1,000 kilowatt-hours, right? You get an energy charge for that and then you get a fuel charge for that. The fuel charge is based on the price of oil. We can't control that. Whether you had zero lights or 1,000 lights, the rate will be what it is. It's the price of oil. However, if you're using fewer kilowatt-hours, when you do the maths, you pay less in energy, you pay less in your fuel charge. That's the only way to impact it because by and large, fuel charge rates are driven by the price of oil, which is APEC and whoever we bring oil from. Monsterat is too small to have any influence on that whatsoever.
An alternative, Monsterat has solar panels.
It does.
How could that now helpful?
It does. It does.
How?
Because the power, the power that, 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 that system generates is power that they don't need to generate from oil. So if they were using one gallon of oil before, right? When they put PVs, one gallon of oil to produce 10 kilowatt-hours, right? If that system can provide for us three kilowatt-hours, I only need to get the other seven from the oil. So I use less oil. So the more renewable that you add to your grid, the less fossil fuels that you actually need to use. So that in a, in a perfect world, one day you might be 100% renewable, which means you don't import oil anymore and you don't have a fuel charge anymore because there's no fuel.
Coming up with some kind of standard for light bulb is, um, like a waste policy versus actually standard or some kind of policy for the renewable energy that could limit the need for the amount of fuel that the generation charge, actually you call it fuel charge, um, would be less for the consumer. Because that's what the consumer is worried about. A lot of people is pretty much saying, oh, if I put in this bulb, then my bill is going to be less. But you're pretty much saying that's not what's going to happen.
No, that's not what I'm saying. Let's not confuse energy efficiency with renewable energy. Energy efficiency is about efficiency. It's about getting the most out of what you have. That's efficiency, right? Renewable energy is, is about clean energy, using fewer emissions. So one addresses the quantity of consumption. The other one addresses the quality of consumption. So there are two different things, even though we often say it in the same breath. We talk about energy efficiency and renewable energy. They're two different things. Energy efficient, this can be a minute. Energy efficiency is intended to, to get the lower hanging fruit. You can go and buy a bulb today and make a difference. However, to make a difference on the renewable energy, you got to put in a system. And that costs a lot more. It gives a better result, I would agree with you. But it takes a lot more resources to do a second PV system or lookout than it takes for you to walk into a store and buy efficient LEDs. Your luck. Any other questions so far? Okay. So this last point had to do with the life of your LED. So LEDs now will last longer. So instead of your old lamp simply lasting for 1,500 and dropping dead, the LEDs will last past that and will drop gradually. And when they get to a certain point, you will want to change them. But they don't usually just drop dead on you, right? So the standard is, after 6,000 hours, not 1,500, this is four times as long. So after four times the life, when you're on your fourth old bulb, your current LED should still be giving you 86.7% of the light. So if you were getting 100 lumens, after 6,000 hours, you should be getting 867, which is still pretty good. Yeah, but depending on what you're using that light for, you will decide, we change this now? After six, you might say, well, I got six years out of this, I gonna change it. But you can move it to somewhere else that you don't need that brightness. So what, if it was in your reading room, you can say now, okay, this LED is getting old, shift it to my, maybe the bathroom doesn't have LEDs yet, you can shift it to there and replace this one after those number of years. Well, that is true. Some, some installations may be such that it's not as easy as it sounds, right? Um, you're talking about these, for example. The good thing about the LED is that it's, it's a self balancing unit, which means unlike these, you know, you might have the, the three or four, four foot lamps in one fixture, that there's a ballast in there, this big square thing that starts it. You don't need that with a LED. So you will strip all that out because the LED is self, is a self balancing unit. A week drive, what do you mean? LED lamp doesn't carry transformer. Mm hmm. Yeah. Well, we gotta test for that. Those won't get on your shelf in Monster Rat. We get seventy percent of our stuff straight from China with no test. Wherever it comes from, there's no tests. Well, I'm just saying most come from China, but the point is none, you don't test any of them. So they're coming and just land on your shelf and you go pick them up and hope for the best and then they mash upon you, right? They all do some kind of testing. E C and, yeah. One of the reasons why we wanna do testing in the region is because, as I said earlier, we are a small island. There are not many islands smaller than you, right? In the Caribbean, in the tropics, our environment right now, yeah? The people in, in the UK trembling, you know why? It cold. How are you feeling? Point is, our environments are different. If you test, it's like, if you test a particular EV or whatever on flatland, you may report the most wonderful results. I tell you, you could drive for two weeks, bring it to Monster Rat, that's a test. Bring it to Monster Rat, put it on your hills and see how it stands up. So our lab is in Trinidad. They will simulate your exact environment, not just Trinidad environment. They have a lab outfitted with an environment to match whatever we say. If we say our ambient temperature is twenty seven, our maximum is forty, whatever, they'll create that environment and test in that environment and get results in that environment. And they will always be different to what you get from the overseas packaging. Absolutely does. It does. There's a loss. Whenever we buy a refrigerator at home, you buy it with a transformer or at least some kind of voltage regulator, right? In all my life, I've only had one stove that tell the right time. You know why? Because we're running a different hertz to where the stove's coming from. So the time on my, on my microwave and on my stove, always flying ahead and it don't stop. It's not like when it gets in midnight, it wait. Don't wait, keep going because the hertz are different. So with refrigerators, to not mash them up, you really literally have to buy that little voltage regulator with every refrigerator. So I suspect you may have a similar problem. So it is a problem that we have. And this is one of the things that we suffer from because we are a small island states. We should make an effort to buy from people who, who will either, either consider our requirement and build some, some flexibility. Like, for example, most of all computers, whether you go to Switzerland, you go to Barbados, wherever you go, you just plug it in. You ain't gotta worry about nothing. The computer figures it out. It figures out the voltage, figures out the frequency and it adjusts. That's computers, but a lot of our appliances don't do that. Whatever you hit it with, it will take for as long as it can. And it's usually inefficient, usually lose like sixteen percent because of the frequency difference. We use, you just lose it. Yeah. So until we get to running more DC appliances, because the AC is a, when we talk about waves, the AC is up, down, DC is flat. So if we had DC appliances and we had a DC supply coming from the utility, our appliances will work better. As I said, the LED will give you ninety nine percent efficacy if you're running on DC. But we run on AC, so we don't get that. So yeah, we do lose, but it's, you're living here on earth. Nothing is perfect.
Sorry, I have another question. Is there an example of another Karikom country where the standards are implemented so far?
Definitely.
And how did it work in relation to individuals who bring in their own LED supplies for their developments?
Yeah.
At the port of entry, how is that applied?
Good question. This is why I'm talking to you because importing these things will not, I know it won't just be the retailers and the importers. I know that when you go to the UK, when you go to Miami or wherever you go, you come back with some stuff in your thing. So before you go, this is what you need to know. This is the standard. So if you, if you bring back a known lamp that border control can check to see, well, that's been tested, that's fine, you're good. You bring back some no name, no brand, no nothing, it's just in a plain white box. Or you throw away all the wrapping or something, nobody knows what it is. It could be the worst LED in the world and for, for a one person, right? It wouldn't make sense to say, leave your six LEDs here at customs while we send one to be tested. That doesn't make any sense. So you would have a real problem. The government will need to decide, a border control will need to decide, what do we do with our citizens? Who we are telling we do not accept LEDs unless they meet the standard. Now, the standard information is not a secret. You should get the standard information. So when you go shopping in Home Depot, right? From many stores, you will see that they have the labels. If you walk through Bram Smart in Miami for your refrigerator, ACs and stuff, you will see Energy Star tags and you'll see A to F ratings on appliances. So you can look, the same thing we are trying to do now, they've already done. So you can buy something. So when you bring it in, you could at least show, make a case for yourself by showing that you bought something that was a, an A class or, or when you, when you check it, it meets the standard, right? But the one one scenario is gonna be problematic because some people are just gonna see six of these for a dollar, pick them up and throw them in the suitcase and say this costs ten times as much in Monster Rat. But that may not work out. The fact that you did it last year, you get away, don't mean they can get through this time, right? We're gonna get the retailers in line, let them have quality products available for you. So unless you can verify the quality of what you're buying yourself, work, work with the process. But I, I feel you. Alright?
Actual draft.
Yes, okay. So we're gonna make sure that these LEDs will run for six thousand hours before they drop below sixty eight six point seven percent. Sorry, ask again. No, I, I had, there's a particular security light on my house. You know, you don't already put that for cars. There's one particular one that, I mean, it wouldn't last more than a couple of months. And it's at the bottom of the bar, the southern tip, right at the bar, yeah? So I get the, I get the Atlantic breeze, uh, something and the mystery, you know, the salt and the corrodes, everything in there. So I can't even just put it out within the other one. You gotta get the electric and the kit out and everything. So I know that the, the environment can be very destructive and it can make a mess of these things. You could, you could have a good quality car and if you live right on the beach, truth is after a couple of years, I mean, see your bonnet looking all kind of colors because of where you live. So the environment can, can really mess this up. That, that is quite true. But what I did to solve the problem is to change the fixture and make sure it's enclosed with a nice glass cover on it. Change all of them and the problem went away. Because the, the sea breeze can't fly through anymore.
Uh, plastic kind of bomb, so to speak. Right? And you have the temperature that is present, change the color. Because by the inside is actually beginning to, and then you would have, it is plastic. That, that kind of white, it's gone really.
As, as part of the thing you bought?
Maybe you love to do it in your own. Um, not the inside set, but the one that shape, like the inside set, maybe the bomb, the rock part, the bottom part.
Mm hmm.
Some of them are plastic, most of them are not. I am saying that, that plastic in, I'm not a computer that we operate, you know, um, your seventies, high nineties. Just that kind of shit, alright? For us, that plastic covering to change the heat on there. From giving you more white lighting to something that is more all white and you have different.
Well, one, one, once it's tested, if it's lamp and the, when, when you test it, you get the result. It may not be accurately what the LED is doing, but in terms of what you're getting from the fixture, the, the color rendering might be different, other things might be different. Uh, so that will be on the results for that particular one. It may still be efficient, yeah? So it may still pass. But if you get poor lighting, it'll fail. Well.
And as you already said, that these, these lamps, they're tested, they're tested in a controlled environment. And they're controlled environment, you know, being, you say like the operating environment.
Well, here, when we send a lamp for testing, we provide the environmental parameters that they will use for testing, which is why you can't trust what it comes in with because you don't even know the conditions under which it was tested.
And just to add to what you definitely mentioned, you come to the trial. Um, now, it's difficult to determine, especially if you have a voltage. Separate tap, um, right in the middle of your house, like the electric meters. Alright? You need to get the voltage full off and the electric to come back. Now, we should be operating that to thirty, to forty, you know, plus or minus seventy seven. You don't know, you can go to seventy five. Now, in that trial, that, that transformer that you spoke about, you get the fire system that changing the AC to PC. Goes up and down, it's high, it's low.
You're actually.
You lose, you lose it like just the same way as what you had, that we did. No, no, losing just the same.
What happens in Monster Rat if your appliances are damaged because of your power supply?
Because I was in, in America and my electrician friend put the change on LED tubes and the power go. About two days after, the lady called us, and we said, like this flickering.
Flickering.
On some of them. We had the change, we go with it, we can invest up the drive on them.
The, those weren't properly tested. Those weren't properly tested. Sorry? No, 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 customers don't have to pay for, for testing. Um, no, the customers don't have to pay for testing. Once the lights are tested, it will give you the best possible options. None of them will be perfect. You ever pass a, a nine hundred thousand Mercedes on the side of the road? How can that be? How can you pay nine hundred thousand dollars for a car and a little Toyota just passing on the road? The best pieces of equipment fail. What the testing process will do is to stress that lamp in all of these key areas. And the ones that fail, we know there's a good chance you will continue to fail, keep you out. And the ones that get in, whether they barely qualify or not, it's your best option. And some of them won't be perfect. You will see later on that we're looking at bulbs that will have a, in another testing parameter, if I get to it, that talks about the failure rate, right? And our standard is gonna say two percent. Only two percent is accepted. So when we test lamps, only two of a hundred can fail. But when, but when we test that lamp and we say it gets the pass and the shipment comes in, two of those are likely to fail, yeah? And you may get one, and you may get one. But we can't throw away the baby with the bath water. Two of a hundred gonna fail. You're unlucky if you get a failure. Take it back to your supplier, complain, cry and try and get back another bulb, right? And that one probably will last you as long as it's supposed to. But all equipment fails. You can't always anticipate the environment that you may be in. The quality of the power you may be subjected to regularly, that will offset lights, refrigerators, TVs, everything. It will mash it up, right? So testing helps. It helps a lot, but it won't solve every problem. Right? Um, so there are probably just about two more of these. Start time, how quickly does the bulb come on? You might realize with, maybe with these, when you hit the switch, it went like on. And sometimes that can just be an annoyance. Sometimes it's unacceptable, depending on where that light is and what you want to do, right? So you wanna make sure that when you hit the switch of LED, it is on in a particular timeframe, right? And what we specify here is point five of a second, which means that you won't even notice. By the time your ear, ears click, sense light travels faster than sound, a lot, lot, lot faster. By the time your hear, your ear hears your switch say click, LED light is on. So you wanna make sure you do it in point five seconds, right? So we wanna test that and make sure that LEDs will deliver on the point five seconds. Premature failure is what we were just talking about. The test we're gonna do is to make sure that only two percent fails after two hundred hours, right? So when we test that lamp after two hundred hours, if more than two in a hundred fail, that lamp will fail. Because if it makes it past that, chances are it'll give you the sixteen hundred. It's kinda how, how, um, Apple does the, the Apple Macintosh, the Apple laptop thingy. Their, their, their parts, the parts. Their, their, their parts, the parts they use are tested tremendously before they go into an Apple computer. Unlike a normal PC, right? With the PC, somebody manufactures chips a thousand a minute. And they take them, check them, they're working, put them in, they build a laptop and they ship it. As a result, more normal laptops fail than Apple. Because Apple won't just push chip in the computer, go ahead. They put it somewhere and test it, test it and test it. And let all the ones that will fail in the first whatever hundred hours, let them all fail right there in their, in their manufacturing line. And then you throw those away and you use the rest. So we're gonna make sure that lamps that you get are more likely to continue after two hundred hours than the two percent that will fail. And this is the final thing that we test for, that is the, the rated life. And this really is, in terms of rated life, it's talking about how long it will last, how long it will continue to give you at least seventy percent of the light. Right? Because if it's giving you at least seventy percent, um, you can consider it still alive, still usable. Yeah? So that's how they measure the rated life of it. And this is, this is determined in, in connection with another standard, IEC, one of these international standards. We often reference these. Um, so they will use that standard to determine when a lamp has reached the end of its life. If it drops below seventy, we call it end of life, even though you may continue to use it. Right? So that's the final one that we test for. There are a few other very technical ones that I won't bore you with. Um, just to cover the last section quickly, in terms of implementing the standard, um, today we're getting your feedback and we will be engaging in a public campaign to keep educating you, provide you with some of this information in, I don't know, flyers or there'll be rated programs and different ways that they will try to reach you to provide you with the information that you need. Uh, we're already engaging the importers, the retailers, so they voice their concerns. We're gonna continue to work with them because they're the ones that will put things on the shelves for you. So you don't have to run off to Miami and bring back stuff that we have to confiscate. And border control, they have a job to do. They will implement the standard. If something comes that doesn't comply, they have to decide what do I do with this? We can, in some cases, send them back or destroy them or send them for testing and wait. Right? They will decide what options they exercise in each case. Question?
More of a comment, um, or recommendation. Um, you spoke of the lab in Trinidad and this is a Caricom project. My thinking is, or my recommendation, can't that lab look at all the possible, all the high um, brands that are imported in the region? This is information shared from the different Caricom countries in terms of what they import and do a testing and then send out a regular listing as to what is the best quality and which markets they can, um, the suppliers can order from. Um, vis a vis having suppliers seeking for something out there and then bring it back to have to send it to test. I'm thinking about Monsterat case in getting stuff shipped to Trinidad to test for a period of time to come back here. And in the meantime, you're out of lights and stuff like that that people will need. Can't it be the other way around, that the center takes the responsibility of finding out the common brands that are ordered, where they're coming from, testing them, send out the recommendation. This, once something new pops up, there's a way that they send the question or suppliers send a question to the lab and ask about a particular brand. Uh, um, because Monsterat is small, so our bulb is in comparison to, say, Antigua, is the, yeah?
Reasonable suggestion, um, something to consider really would be capacity. The lab is a, is a valuable unit. It has staff that need to be paid. Um, you know, it takes time to test bulbs. You don't test one. You probably need, I don't know, a hundred or whatever. So they don't really have the infrastructure to test a whole set of popular brands you're talking about. Um, but what, what they do is, is that they're, they're setting up a database that Monsterat will have access to so that immediately anything that's been testing becomes, they become aware of it. And certainly they should be able to do that listing for you. But in terms of getting a, a more comprehensive listing to reduce the likelihood that somebody brings in a popular bulb and it's not tested, that will take manpower and infrastructural capacity to do. But I will however, since I do have a connection with Crosscue, I will mention it to them to see whether or not they might be able to find somebody who is willing to help the region by, by doing that. Or, or, or establish a relationship with a, a lab in a bigger country that has the capacity to do that. So they may send a request for, you know, a dozen lights every six months and they get them tested and come back. But I know that Trinidad doesn't have the capacity to do several tests. Um, so I'm just hoping they could keep up. But I will forward your suggestion. I think it's a good one and it would remove, you know, issues when stuff come, comes in.
And then one more thing is cost. What if then an importer brings in a particular brand? Is it their responsibility to send a sample to Trinidad who takes up that cost?
Logistics still needs to be worked out. Um, in, in most territories, it was at the retailer. Meaning the retailer is well, who determines, I'm going to bring this brand or that brand or that brand. One retailer might say, well, these are the two that are tested, they're gonna stick with these. Another retailer says, I want something new on the market. So they would have to bear the cost of having their manufacturer in China send. I don't think there's a lot of opposition to China to say, no problem, we will send a hundred to Trinidad. Because it, it opens the whole Caricom market for them. If they get one of their bulbs tested in Trinidad and cleared, it means now they can export to the entire Caribbean region without any problems on the border. So there is something in it for them and the cost to send a hundred bulbs to Trinidad is negligible to a China manufacturer.
And I had.
Who manufacturing millions a day.
Just one more question.
One plus one is two plus one is three.
Is there thought of a follow-up test of the top quality? So is there thoughts, you may test it now, it's a high quality, China decides it's gonna send it out. Who tests it again five, ten years down the road or five years down the road to see if the quality maintains?
Yeah. It's a, it's a good question, but it's a costly exercise. I don't know that we really have the capacity to be retesting. There are things that we need to repeat every now and then that we don't. For example, an energy audit. You may do an audit on this building and you say, well, we need to change the lights and whatever else. And we do that, but every five to seven years, you should audit again. Because the technology that's available to improve the building would have changed. There might be a new paint out there that you can paint on the outside now that keeps in here cool, that wasn't available seven years before. So there are a lot of things that we should do every five or seven years, but we don't because we're always lacking in resources to do these things. Alright, there was a hand.
I have two questions. One, the lab that you referred to, do they have a website where they publish based on tests that they would have done, that they would have published, um, products that meet the standard? So if I'm buying something, I could go and see what meets the standard and just buy it? Okay. Okay, and my second question is, I order from Shein on Amazon, which one of the bulbs meet the standard? Because that make it easier for me, I just know this one meet it and I buy it.
Can you pick something to put into your, your cart?
Mm-hmm.
They, it will usually give you some specifications. Like if it's clothes, it tells you the size, it'll tell you the color and you will see it and that. So with equipment like bulbs, it will give you some information that you should be able then to compare, once you have access to the Monsterat standard. You should be able then to compare to see whether or not it, it looks like it meets the standard. And always of course, place a call into Department of Energy to get. You got some local information there. Some good local. Yeah, I, I think the ministry should, should do that. To keep their air to the ground, uh, they will have a closer relationship with the lab in Trinidad than you would. So I think they should find a way to publish that information. But once the database comes online, you'll also be able to go and check. But again, that's information that will have to be provided to you. If they tell you, go to www.lampsincaribbean.com and you go there and you look and you see the list, that's the easiest way to disseminate the information. Because no matter where you are, whether you literally standing in Walmart or you at home and you can go there and look while you're shopping and you can see what has already been tested, what's already been, been approved. Um, so I would expect hopefully in the next six months that that database would provide access to the public to be able to see what has been approved. And they've been testing for the last, uh, few years. So I know that there is a list already of LED lamps that are tested and, and approved for the region. Even though, even though the Monsterat standard is higher. Don't forget that part. Trinidad is testing based on a Caricom standard that looks at LEDs and lamps. So when you see the information from Trinidad, you're gonna see some information that you're not interested in. Meaning you may see some CFLs from GE that they gave a pass, but you know that CFLs are not committed to Monsterat, right? So you're only interested in the LED results. Right? And for their standard, three percent failure is what they're working with. You're working with two percent. But they will publish the exact value. If it's two point five one or one point nine two seven six five, that'll be there. So when you look at it and you have access to your Monsterat standard, you will know whether or not it can come into Monsterat. Because you will have a slightly higher standard than the rest of Caricom. Alright, so we're done. I think we are at the end. I probably had a couple pictures here of, but surveillance here simply refers to every now and then the ministry might decide to go into a store and check. I mean, if, if it came through the port, the port should, you know, border controls should control that, but things might end up in the shelf that we didn't see at the border. So the ministry should every now and then just go and check to make sure that the stuff that is there is on the approved list. Uh, this is just part of the testing environment, how they use arrays of light, lamps to test. And this is some of the equipment that's set up, all those sockets. So they will have rows and rows of sockets like those that they put all the LEDs in to start the test. And it will run for days and days and days and days to get the data that they will then submit for a simple label like this. Just a label that you will stick right on the shelf next to the lamp and you can go read it. So for this one, infor- information here included administrator logo, so you might say, division of energy, um, any disclaimers you wanna go on there and put. Meaning, you know, if you, if, if you use the bulb underwater or whatever, I mean, you can have a problem, right? So there may be some disclaimers that they may make. Uh, the brand will be on there, the bulb type, uh, the performance requirements, the efficiency, the lumens, the brightness, the kilowatt hours used, the estimated annual use, meaning if you have this bulb, based on the, the, the tariff you pay at your power company, they will estimate how much it will cost you to run this bulb for a year. So if you've got three LEDs and you've got three different labels, you will see this one says, this will cost you a hundred and fifty dollars to run for a year, using normal usage, right? This one will cost you a hundred and sixty dollars. This one will cost you a hundred and eighty. So when you buy a lamp, you know how much it's gonna cost you on average to run it for a complete year. Because the bulbs may have different prices. So if you buy a lamp that costs ten dollars, it may cost you two, two hundred dollars to run it for a year. You buy a lamp that costs twelve dollars, it's two dollars more, right? And may cost you twenty-five dollars more to use in a year. So you'll be able to do the math and realize that it's not always wise to buy the cheapest thing. Because the cheapest thing might cost you more to operate, but it gonna cost you every twelve times a year, it gonna be costing you. Whereas your purchase is a one-time purchase. So you could pay an extra five dollars once and save that five dollars every month for an entire year. So that is the kind of information that would be on your, on your label, your rated life, how many hours you're gonna get from it, any additional information you wanna provide. And in the case of Caricom, they would normally have a QR code that you could literally scan with your phone and see all the additional information for the test. So not everything will hold on a little label. All the other information, scan the QR code that you do when you go to a restaurant or you're at a bus stop in developed world, you can get all the information on there. And that's it. I had a thousand questions already, so can't be a thousand more. But if you have any additional questions, must be two minutes to seven. So any other questions? No? Well, by next week, they'll have the final standard. After that, it will be over to. Sorry? But communicate that to the ministry, please. I, I hope he's listening. But thank you very much, sir and ladies, for your contribution. It was, it was really helpful, but I will consider that as I finalize the standard. Hopefully twenty twenty-five will start with a new lighting standard for Monsterat. Alright, so have a good night.